We have quite a lot of managers today. All right, let me remember what everything was made. Hold on. I didn't get much to give my. Right. I need this little spiel.
Well, there's a change in our system. They think it's what is this?
It's the maximum one twenty six seats when you know.
There's something for that.
Check whether it's ready ninety or so. If it is, the resident issue here says to find sort of fresh, it'll be max one twenty six.
You say your plans.
Yeah, you're on. As I make it. It might be one thirty. All right, one thirty.
They're on.
Was it the anti news first?
Yeah. They should present the.
Thanks for watching.
They don't.
Yeah, if he's there.
He is.
They don't.
What do I show? All right, let's finish up our conversation.
You see, Max, please. We're on the second chair. I have like six. I had no plan of requiring.
Professional coming.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
All right, we just need to. We're already recording, so. Oh, oh, goodness. Call this meeting to order, please. This is the planning board. Certain board of adjustment of Flemington. Bubba. Let's see. This. We will hold on. Stand that you're able to deflect some. By doing this, we have to say it to America. Next, your body, which stands one hundred and fifty. Individual with liberty and justice. A H P C. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Ocean Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic. Notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hudson County Democrat and Canadian News. Newspaper long about thirty first twenty twenty four and January thirtieth twenty twenty four. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted for Flemington Municipal Building located at Thirty Eight Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal park and distributed to all persons. If any requesting comment copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate for judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. There we go. All right, can we take the roll call, please?
Mayor Karen?
Here.
Ms. Passaro is excused. Mr. Champion?
Here.
Giffen.
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Dasha and Mr. Cook are excused. Ms. Weitzman?
Here.
Semino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle is excused. Mr. Mario was the next on the.
Mr. Mario has resigned from the paid work due to health reasons.
Mr. Echo?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski? Here. Flargo?
Here.
Ms. McVanas?
Here.
And Mr. Chapman is excused.
All right, thank you. Item one on our agenda is a term for public comments. This is for items not currently on the agenda before us. And anybody in the room have any public comments? And I'm not seeing a wait time function on our online system, so seeing now we'll move on to item two, may I comment?
Just a couple. First of all, I just want to make the balances out to. That's a woman with sorrow who lost her mother very unexpectedly last week, which is why she is not here tonight. She wanted everybody to know that. Obviously, they prefer to be here, so I just wanted people to know that, as I said. Ms. DiMario resigned due to health concerns late last week. And I just want to give the planning board a brief update on the parking committee that I formed. Earlier this year, along with. Our municipal planner, our municipal attorney, our municipal D P W superintendent. And our police chief and our favorite traffic consultant because we doesn't have one this year. To review. Traffic issues that are anticipated to be created and parking issues by the union project. And to look at other underlying issues on how to make things flow a little better in town. Couple of things that came out that I that I did make public. Last night at the council meeting. One is that. After a drive around this town by our D P W superintendent and our traffic consultant to look at issues all over town. That could help alleviate parking and traffic flow. There were a number of issues identified that Jay is now and the chief of police are now studying and reviewing. One of them is the North Main Street traffic light. And the fact that the timing doesn't allow for enough cars to get through headings south. From Branbar Boulevard to Park Avenue, trying to make a left turn onto Main Street heading heading south. And I guess it's east to west and then north to south Main Street. So it was determined that the timing is all wrong in that light. We were talking about potentially putting in a left turn signal. And Jay determined that it's really about the timing and that the loop. That does the detection on the timing, the traffic timing is broken. And it's also broken at church and Broadway. So that's also not flipping over when there's actual need. It's flipping over a timing pattern, so it's blocking traffic from flowing. As it's doing on the North Main Light. So the traffic company that does those lights for us maintains them, has been contacted to get us a price to fix those loops. We're not really sure what. They're going to be, but we anticipate several, possibly tens of thousands of dollars to fix those loops in the road. The timing Jay is going to serve by and they're taken care of on the North Main Light. The other area that's being immediately addressed by ordinance, it'll be introduced at our next meeting in June. Is that the Williams Broad Street. Intersection, which is notorious for bad site distance. So bad in fact that. On the west side of Broad Street at Williams. No, we have a block from cars being parked. I think it's two or three car lengths. So people can see it's been determined to turn that into a four way stop. And then put the restore those missing parking spaces. And the spots closest to William Street. On the north side of Broad are going to be marked as compact cars. So it'll make it a safer intersection because everybody has to slow down and it's going to restore one to two parking spaces at onto Broad Street. So it's an ordinance to make it before we stop. It's an ordinance to the compact cars as well. So those are going to be introduced at our next meeting. The other thing that came out of the meeting. And we're. Now, you know, unfortunately, it's like worst nightmare we have to really figure this out. Is that Jay did talk to the redevelopment who told Jay that, yes, indeed, they're charging for parking for hotel guests. He doesn't know how much yet. He said he doesn't know how much yet. And he is charging for parking for any apartment resident. So the parking is not going to be free. And if they don't want to pay, he's going to direct them to park on our streets. So that is exactly why, you know, proactively I formed this committee because. Although it was asked six times by me personally, planning board in the ten council meetings. When these redevelopment projects before both parties. Whether or not he was going to charge for parking, he never, he always said he didn't know. I do believe the planning board would have handled it typically had they known that he was going to charge for parking, especially for the apartments. It's two hundred and five apartments. We don't know how many cars it's going to translate to. And a hundred hotel rooms, which will most likely be full on weekends when famine nation is in operation. All being charged, so we're now going to deal with that head on and figure it out from the playing this parking committee. So I just wanted to let the planning board know about those items and as we come out with more. Quote solutions with some of these other issues that we had found around town for parking and for movement of vehicles. You know, Jay is working on a whole model on how to keep the traffic from the hotel on Main Street. As was represented by redevelopment in the mayor at the time. That the majority of the traffic was going to stay on Main Street. He was going to keep it on Main Street. So we're now Jay's modeling. Modeling a methodology to do that, that we think is going to work as soon as we. As that gets unveiled, it's going to be a series of ordinances as well on the streets and which directions are going to go. You know, I'll be making all that public as well, but you know, we're working very slowly and making sure everything works properly and it's all blessed by Jay, all blessed by the chief of police. That, you know, our garbage trucks can handle any movement and people making deliveries and moving into buildings can do that as well, so we're working through that. So that's my.
Thanks. Thinking about something you just raised, and maybe Beth is something you can do within your report later on, maybe. Isn't it true that doesn't that project have to come back before that they have to provide a revised site plan?
Who? They have to go back?
Yeah, because the current agreed site plan includes the police station being in place and now they've moved and they have for that section to be.
That section.
To be added on, they'll have to go back.
Well, I asked him when he moved out whether what he was planning to do with property and he said absolutely nothing for him.
So, yeah, if they decide to change the building, then we need a revised site plan, but it's simply going to be dated. With the new site plan apart at that time.
So they're going to use they're going to use that building as the real estate office for the apartments for at least for a while. That's what we were told.
So they're going to be inside to be.
Right.
So that might be more of a essentially like a change of business class essentially rather than a new site plan. Whether they need site plan to accommodate the change of pieces can be dependent on what changes, you know, what they're doing on the building. It's just simply occupancy with the new tenant that's permitted.
Well, right, you know, it's the planning shit going to reuse a four. Now, I'm.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Well, basically, I'm just asking like the footprint, the footprint is changing. The footprint, the current site plan includes the police station staying there. It's not that. So it has it has to come. It has to come back. And so that. That we bring it. Bring up the parking.
Maybe because of the company station. The police are moving.
The current.
So I think. Part of the bar.
And just throwing it out there, then there's an opportunity to have these questions raised with the developer in a formal setting.
I think only if he only if he wants to be something with that building and right now it's. He doesn't have any intention to.
All right, well, I'm putting it out there for everybody on this current board to remember that. Right, fair enough. And I guess council comments to President Adrian didn't pass anything on there, so.
And all three.
Yeah. Um. Okay, item four, HPC comments. Dennis, I'm presuming you have a bit of something to say. I might realize why that is.
Yeah, so I got two things. One, the house tour. So it was a very successful house tour. We sold five hundred and twenty five tickets. That's nine percent more than last year. And wanted a special thanks to planning board members who participated, Todd Cook, who was also on the planning committee. Karen Giffen and Don Echo who volunteered the whole day. And then borough council members, Tony Parker, who volunteered his house. And Susan Engelhardt and Trent Levitt, who volunteered the entire day, so it was greatly appreciated. It was a great event. And then the only other thing I have from our HPC meeting last month, one hundred and forty eight Main Street. Eileen sent this out to everyone. The HPC did approve demolishing the chimney and new roofing. On that site. That's all I have.
Karen, Karen, it's Mike. Mayor, you were going to mention about the training videos.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Champion. Yeah, Eileen sent out to everybody an email regarding stormwater training. That is a state requirement that every planning board member and municipal elected official must watch this video and then send an email that they watched it. Put it on and do a crossword puzzle on your. You know, the state thinks that you guys are all going to pay attention and it's, you know, these stormwater people on track and this is, you know. Like everything, so it's a it's a new rule that they shoved through, so please watch it and just. Then I send Eileen an email. She'll forward it to our municipal engineer.
Do we have a deadline when we need to done that by? Legally, Mike, to know?
It has to be watched in a cal- calendar year. So this year.
Right, just put it on. Let's let's do it before the end of the summer. Let's do it. In July, we can, because otherwise we'll just forget. I know I have a deadline. Yes, I'm sending a end of June, I'm sending a end of July deadline for planning board members and that will satisfy that requirement. Thank you for reminding us, right? All right, professional reports, item five. All right. Okay. Um. Do you want to do it now or is it all in the in item ten?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, let's save that discussion for item ten. I don't think I have anything in addition to that.
Okay. All right, that was clever. Nothing other than what we're going to get. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, item six is approval of the minutes from the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Those were distributed by Eileen. Does anybody have any comments or additions or anything that needs to be changed on those before we move ahead with a vote on those?
Anything to approve.
Thank you. We have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's take the roll call, I mean, thanks.
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mino?
Yes.
Mr. Echo?
Yes.
Show.
It's very quiet. Dennis, you're very quiet today.
I have a new laptop. Maybe it's the settings.
There we go. Um, okay, thank you. That's good, right? We're all good? Yeah, all right, thank you. Item seven is resolution Chick-fil-A Inc. Application twenty twenty three oh seven, block forty four, lot seven. I see there's been a lot backwards and forwards again today.
There has, but we have since resolved it. At the last meeting, if you recall, I was not here. There were some questions and we're tabled the resolution itself. We've since worked out the questions. We've confirmed. The changes that need to be made. All the changes have been made. There's one last correction we're going to make. Page nine, conditions eleven and twelve. We're going to make sure that they reflect forty two as opposed to forty four parking spaces. And we're just going to insert in there that that number of parking spaces relates to a maximum of a hundred and twenty six seats. If for some reason the applicant exceeds a hundred and twenty six, then they have to come back to the board because they would require more than the forty two parking spaces that they've provided.
Right. Did my extra tree get in there?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're good.
Perfect, so we're in a position to call a vote on this. Motion. Now, we only have, here's the thing, we only have. Do we just have to have a majority of the ones that are eligible?
You can only have, you can just one.
Just one, just one person, so we're fine.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Can you make the motion? You're not eligible to vote. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. I apologize. I'll look at the central station. I apologize.
That's why you thought they were going to know.
Yes, yes. Mayor Karen?
I have a reason to make this. Tell me, yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item eight, this is the one. Resolution to Central Stations and the application twenty twenty three oh five, lot thirty four, lot seven. Is it, are we on point with this one?
No, it's still being reviewed by applicants council as well as our professionals, so that will be on the agenda.
What's the, what, is there a hold of that word that we did? Something to them or?
No, it's just. Based upon when I got it out.
Okay.
I've had enough time to look at it.
Okay, I just wanted to say there was a sticking point.
No, 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 not yet. I'm not saying that one people want to go get it, but. Wait, I missed that. But I'm doing, I shouldn't have.
She's on a work to move basis. All right, so we'll table that one to the next.
I just wanted to, just for the record, the Chick-fil-A resolution will be number twenty twenty four ten.
Oh, right, the resolution. Thank you. Okay, so we'll table item eight for the next meeting. And then, okay, what about item nine, Karen? Are we ready with that one?
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, so yes, we're going to table it and you ask me question.
No, I asked if we were ready for your smile.
Oh, okay, but didn't you ask before that you said?
We can ask that. I'll ask that question. Are you going to be here for the next meeting?
I'm not going to do that.
Oh, thank you.
I will be on vacation. But let's talk about that when we get there because if there's nothing on the agenda that. Public council should be here for, I can hop on the Zoom.
Okay.
For whatever protocol the meeting will be.
All right, well, let's keep that.
So we get that. Okay, yes, now we are ready for your smile.
My smile, my solution, your smile.
Yep, and that's resolution number what, I think?
Twenty twenty four eleven.
Okay. So that is.
We've got. Can I get a motion for that one, please?
Move.
Second?
Second, well, third.
Try and go, you know, or.
Semi, semi.
You know.
All right, heard that just.
Can we call the roll call?
Mayor Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Champion?
Yes.
Weitzman?
Yes.
He's looking for.
I didn't catch that last, were you calling my name?
Oh, on your smile, reservation seventh November.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. All right. Come on for some fun then. All right, item ten, discussion, historic preservation element of master plan. Update us where we are at, please.
So we are at the point where I have a draft element that I've been approving to folks. And this is just to be clear, in case anybody's not sure, this is not a public hearing. This is simply the discussion of the draft. And so the intention I have for this evening is to review the draft of the board, take any comments or questions you have to make any edits that are necessary. And then to work with folks to do the public hearing for it. So this element is, I mean, it's an eighteen page document, but the text of it is only a handful of pages, just two pages. And it largely reflects a memo that John Hatch did on behalf of or in conjunction with the HPC. And so similar to previous discussions we've had on this general topic. The borough through, or I guess through the HPC, is seeking to expand the historic district to include a number of additional properties. And so what you have in this element, I think that the highlight is, is it does just that. It includes a map and a photograph and description of all the various properties that are recommended for inclusion. The other thing it does in terms of the text that's been put together, there's a brief introduction that just makes clear that the other elements. Continue to be relevant to the extent they haven't been, to the extent there's no conflict here. I also included a statement of significance, which came directly from John Hatch. He provides some additional context for. For for historic buildings and the reason why. And information about Flemington, how it came to be in terms of its historic district. We also have a little bit of additional information on the period of significance. You may recall that in our last amendment in twenty twenty, we provided additional language regarding the period of significance. This reflects that and provides a little additional context. And then of course, there are a couple of paragraphs on the historic district. So it's. Personally, I think it's quite straightforward. Most of it, quite honestly, is taken almost directly or verbatim from John Hatch's memo. So I don't want to speak to the HPC, but I feel pretty comfortable that this reflects their recommendations to the planning board. So as I said, I'm happy to take any questions. But for the details on which properties are in, which properties are out. I think what I would need to do is take questions and work with John and and Dennis to help answer this.
Okay.
And Dennis, I don't want to steal your thunder, but you know. Because I do think this is a collaboration between the planning board and the HPC.
Right, and I would just add, it's exactly what we went over. It represents what everyone said to move forward with, so. Hopefully, we can all move forward and get this done.
Okay, great, so no surprises from what we've seen before, right? So does anybody on the board have any questions or comments from Dennis or Ben on this?
Page four seventy four, Elwood Avenue. Is that wrong? I can't tell you how many times I'm on the phone with a delivery, having to tell them it's Elwood, like we brought it back, Elwood.
Right, I must have been thinking of the Blues Brothers when that move went to the, it's Elwood. Oh, I see, right.
Got it. Okay.
I don't see any hands raised. Everybody. Looks like what happened with your description. HPC can bet something. Um, what is the process now? So now we have to go to a public hearing. Now, is it? If I recall. There are two necessary, but can we combine them? That's the question I'd like to ask. Are we allowed to combine them? So that we don't spend a lot of money on having two public hearings, can the HPC can join with us?
I think so, and I think that's similar to what we talked about, sure. So the borough ordinance takes what's required in the municipal land use law and expands upon it, which is fine, but just for anybody that's looking at the municipal land use law, know that borough ordinance requires additional steps. So there is a notice period and a public hearing that's required. The public hearing is set for for the HPC to do. And we had talked previously about rather than having the HPC organize a public hearing, which is honestly not something that they that they typically do. They would coordinate with planning board to essentially do a joint HPC and planning board meeting.
Do the do the owners of these properties have to be noticed?
Yes. Yes. Um. And in addition to that, so we have to do notice. We do the public hearing in coordination with the HPC. The HPC is required to submit a report to the planning board that the planning board then reviews. The planning board then submits a report to the governing body. And then the governing body is tasked with actually adopting the historic district or not.
And this joint meeting would do two things. It would do the HPC's. Public meet, public hearing part, and then after conclusion of that, they would then almost hand it to us and say, here's a report. And we would agree on we, this is the joint part of it that we help do that on the same night and then vote to send that to the. Body, the municipal body, is that correct?
I think it sort of, it sort of depends on how the hearing goes. If we do the hearing and there are no comments, no changes that are necessary. I guess it's possible that the HPC could write then in there, do a report that then is. Sort of pass across the table, so to speak, to the planning board. We would review it. We could do our report at the same hearing like we would do for a master plan for a for a land use ordinance. And then all of that would go to the council. If the hearing has substantive comments and questions from the public. I could foresee the HPC, as well as the planning board, wanting to wanting to take a pause and think about those comments. The HPC prepares its own report. The planning board then review its report in order to then prepare our report. So it's, I think it depends on how the hearing goes. If there's no, no comment that creates concern with a report, then I think. It's possible all of that could happen on one night. If 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 not, then it might be a better idea to give folks an opportunity to think about the wording amongst themselves, you know, amongst the HPC, amongst the planning board. But it's a little hard to anticipate. Um, but it's a little hard for me to anticipate.
Would you then have to do another public hearing with the planning board if that?
That would be my question, don't?
No, no, only the HPC is required to do the planning board.
So even if we got substantive comments and then, then they, they adjust the report and then to, to send that to us for our review, which we will do separately, don't that situation occur? We don't have to notice for that part of that. Okay, but I would like to see if we can combine it simply because it just takes away confusion, does it? Or does it?
Probably gives the money off, though.
Well, that's my main aim as well. It's also so, um, as Beth said, we're, we're used to holding public hearing and the noticing.
Hmm.
And the, and helping them notice effectively.
I, I think that that's gonna happen in either case. At least I think that's what's proposed, that we do a joint. And then regardless of whether there's a formal report that comes later or the, you know, ceremonial passing across the table that night, there's still gonna be that, that joint. So, you know, the, the save, the time savings and the cost savings will happen that way.
Perfect. That's, that's, that's great.
Uh, the one thing I want to highlight about the notice is it's different than what we typically deal with is it's a twenty day notice period.
Right.
For master plans, it's just ten days. So, um, and, and so it's a little bit different. There's a ten day requirement to adopt the master plan elements and a twenty day notice requirement for the uh, nomination or the expansion of the historic district. Now, I
Right.
That if we fulfill the twenty day notice requirement, we're also gonna be fulfilling the ten day notice requirement for whether or not we need two separate notices. That I don't want.
Yeah.
You know, we could probably incorporate them both together.
Okay.
And that could be helpful, right, if you notice.
Is it two hundred feet from these properties or is it just the, the owners of the properties that are down?
No, it is, uh, three hundred feet from the new boundaries. It is. The ordinance, the borough ordinance simply requires notifications of property owners. If the historic district is an overlay of sorts, then I think it would require two hundred feet.
That's what I'm thinking of, the new boundaries, where we can, we can, that's definitely the pro, new property.
Yeah, if it turns out to be two hundred feet and members of the planning board are and the commission are within those two hundred feet, are they recused from hearing?
I mean, that could potentially be a significant number of people.
It's, it's a big area.
So. Surely there's an ordinance. Somebody will have to let us out, you know?
Yeah, we have to find out if it's just the property owner buildings or the two, like I said. I'm just trying to think of like, I maybe recuse because it's some house in Elwood, possibly. Melissa, because there's some voters have brought. If they're on Elwood, talk with me as well. No, it's at the other end.
I'm alright, I'm not. I mean, certainly any.
But New York City.
Any individual property.
Oh, yeah, and that, I don't, did anybody on the planning board, or the governing body, or the HPC, that's in these houses?
No.
Shit, yeah. Um. If we're combining, uh, I'm being, I'm just saying, oh, it's one hour meeting. Um, do we invite the HPC to it or do we have to have a sep, notice a separate meeting, a, a meeting of both? Of the, of the two of them?
They've probably gotta have an open, public meeting notice because they're all gaffed. I really don't know the HPC, yeah.
I'm just trying to. Exactly, we're, we're, I'm imagining we're inviting them to one of our meetings to undertake this. It's not, that's the public. It's a normally notice public.
I think we just look at it as a joint meeting of both. And like, I've done, I've done with council and planning board to review issues that affect the vote. When cannabis was big, we would do that. We have council. So it's a joint meeting of both. You literally do an opening of one meeting, roll call, and opening of the other meeting, roll call, and then you can definitely get.
Okay. So in terms of setting a date for that meeting, we've got to think about, we've got to check if the twenty, if we need to do twenty plus ten, or if we do just twenty.
Not running here.
It'll be just twenty. Um, I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, so selfishly, I would like this to happen at the meeting after that.
Don't even think we do that.
Yeah. That wouldn't be enough, not gonna be next week. So it's starting to be at least the month from now, early July. We would have to check with HPC. How many members would they have to have a forum at that meeting for that to be official?
Yeah.
So, well, Dennis, can we check with the HPC if they're all available on our next? Not the next meeting, the first thing, July ninth and nine. They have five way, it's five way members and two alternates. Right. Is that right, Dennis? Three, four alternates.
Yeah. Yeah, it's two alternates.
It's five way and five members, so.
Right.
Yeah, so it's. Sure, we'll have to check because they're not usually. Forums only three, so. Okay. Well, I know, yeah. But Dennis, could you, um, advise us if everyone's available for that day? Because it is like officially your meeting and your meeting.
So July ninth?
Or if it's just July ninth, yeah.
Okay.
That's the first day we can possibly do it.
Yeah.
So you're saying, is there a two hundred foot notice or is there just a lot?
That's all we can.
Not just a lot?
No, I'm gonna look into that.
Oh, okay.
It's definitely the property owners, but it may be two hundred feet, and if that's the case, we have to get that done.
Yeah, that, that recheck, who can actually attend?
So whether even, yeah, even, I think that's, that's twofold. Number one, do we have to notice within two hundred feet? And then number two, if we do, is any member of any of those bodies can bring it out if they're located within two hundred?
Right. That's four weeks from today. So officially, do we do, is it working days or, or calendar days until twenty day?
Calendar.
Calendar, okay.
Because it's ten days.
Because otherwise.
They have the day of the day.
Right. But I think if it's working days until the twenty, if it's calendar days, we're thirty, we're alright.
No, it's calendar.
Okay. So if Dennis can confirm that, and but then we would have to get the notices out quite quickly, won't we? It's twenty days, won't it?
Yeah.
Next, next year, we have to go out next year. Can't lie from angry homeowners online. All have to come.
And also.
Hopefully nobody is angry, I'm hopeful.
If it needs to be published in the newspaper, it has to be the deadline for the Hennigan Democrat is the eighteenth at noon.
Right.
It was down there a week. That's a week. That's really tight. I could not do that. I can't. I'm on vacation for a part of this month.
Well, there we go.
So.
So then, we're.
I mean, if somebody else can make the notice, that's fine. I may, I'm, I'm here on the, on the night, but.
I'm aiming for the twenty third, Dennis, instead of.
July twenty third, okay.
It gives us a couple of extra weeks to do the actual, to get the notice, because then the notice would go out on the second of July. That's my estimation. It's not much time, but it's, let's. Hmm. If we can't, if we to do it on the twenty third of July. It gives a few weeks to get the notices together and everything. You know, the eye leans away. Um, if we can't achieve that, with, let, let's know that within a week, that we wouldn't.
Or if someone else can help with the notice, if it's just the, if it's just the uh, property owners, that's one thing, but if it's within two, two of, all the properties within two hundred feet of the boundary, that you might as well just do the whole or town, so.
Exactly, that's, that's.
You know, it does, again.
That's an important fact to be fine.
And actually, if, if you see, it helps stuff envelopes and put labels on them, that would be great.
Right.
Yeah, that's number one, I think.
That's fine, that's a fine one. And if we manage to achieve it, we'll have an envelope stuffing party, so.
Wait, it's just the property owners?
Well, Cara's gonna check first, then. Hopefully, it's just the property owners. If it's everybody, then we'll have to get creative. Hey, you do really good planning meetings at your house, I guess, for like how I start tours, Dennis. I don't know, I'm just saying. Alright, um. So that's it? Thank you. Alright, here we go, the meeting, the meeting. Item eleven, discussion, planning board checklist, the land development section. So, oh, can you update us where we're?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, the last meeting, we discussed the, if we recall correctly, the checklist is broken into two, two phases. First phase is documentation. They have some accompanying application in the second phase. But the second part is documentation that needs to be, uh, docu, needs to be incorporated into any plans that are filed um, with, with the application. So we did the first part, the last meeting.
Yeah.
Um, a couple of things. We took out the column that was on signs on our old application. We've changed that now over to a certificate of non-conform use. Uh, and we made, so, uh, what I had Lindy do this week, that's Lindy from my office. Um, we did a, um, she did an, an update on that first section based on our notes in the last meeting. Hands it out, that we may have misinterpreted something, whatnot, but this is, this is what we would, uh, go with based on what our understanding of what we discussed at the last meeting. Just so look, I did, as you look at this, you're gonna find little things. I just noticed on E that, um, you know, certification of borough water, shore departments, that shore charges are paid, so obviously if you water it, shore charges.
Right.
Um, and, um, under I, proof of submission for public utilities, they probably should say public utility service, including electricity, gas.
Hmm. Did you, that was services or something, isn't it? Yeah, yeah.
So we probably need to incorporate that. Under P, the term soil permeability is a bit archaic. We change that to soil permeability.
Hmm.
E. And under Q, under Q, um, the tax assessor assigns lock numbers. And we indicated, someone in the last meeting indicated that we need to go through nine one one, uh, emergency management for the, for the, uh, postal addresses. I think the post office has something to do with that, too. Um, so I'm not sure what that, if the postmaster, and then they, you want, you want.
I think the nine one one coordinator approaches the post office.
He does, so just.
I, I would have to.
Yeah.
You'd have to check, but.
Sure, it's like to the most, it's just gonna be, yeah, so.
Well, if we get a sign off from emergency management, presumably at some point the post office will be involved in. You know.
Right.
They're not that complicated, uh.
Well, it's not the office of emergency management, it's the, um,
emergency man.
Nine one one coordinator and the, the, the county communication center.
Okay, we listed it as the hundred county emergency management coordinator. Is that the proper terminology?
I'm not exactly sure, and, and.
We went online and saw two different things, and we kind of chose the one we thought was the most.
You can give them a call and see if there's, I mean, it might be different in, in Long County. But I could tell.
We hear a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the wording on Z is, is really, it's from our current, uh, checklist. If, if, as you read this, it's really kind of squirrely.
Hmm.
Uh, letter interpretation from, it actually be from the NJDEP Bureau of Land Use Regulations or letter exemption from the NJDEP Bureau for Plan Management. And at the end, it's not an application letter from the D, it's uh, it's being sent to the D. So we have to just clean up some of the grammar.
Yeah.
Um. And I think it, on Z, do we want to keep building isometrics with that? We're keeping that for major developments.
On Z, I thought that we, um, struck that whole line out.
Well, I had some cryptic notes here when I got back to local.
Could you do a line all the way through that, 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 who's A? Same with, like I say, AA and AB. I have a line through both things.
Well, no, you want to have a traffic, you know, you want that.
No, that's AC on the West Island tab, so.
That's AA on this.
Oh.
Well, could be eliminated, something.
You took it out and brought that up, so.
Yeah.
There was, there was four things, and now there should just be the traffic.
Oh, based on your notes, what, yeah, based on your notes, what, 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 what kind of limit can the old checklist?
There was mounted renderings, developing stages or staging plans, and building isometrics.
So just have a.
Is there anything else? No, that, no, is it just my, me? I was tired and I just got through the whole thing. I, I did go all the way through that one. I didn't just, it's not like, you know what I mean, like I just go all the way from concept plan all the way out.
Straight up.
Yeah, so at, at first I just, I marked off under mounted renderings, because we said we don't need them mounted, but then I think there was discussion that we didn't need them. The because that was the, I, I think the idea behind that was for big ones, then you would have things to decide.
Like, yeah, you would learn about what exactly do they use for us. Building. Especially here where we have, you know, you're almost better off with, uh, electronic displays.
Yeah. Okay, it's, it's like.
Well, the isometric used to be like three dimensional, you know?
I just mean the, the mounted.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the renderings, those are good. But not, I had a note that the renderings.
Renderings.
The development stage, so, uh, Z minus the mountain part.
Right.
AA and AB, we're going to go to plan requirements.
We're going to do it.
So Z C?
Other way.
Yeah, just like renderings. Yeah, and it was some major, we said this was for major projects, right?
It was only for the major projects, yeah. So you want, we're gonna probably, we'll talk about that later when we get the contextual, didn't want to move those out.
That.
That's all three. See, don't lay it up a bit.
Yeah, was that it, that we thought that those kind of things were suited for more for the next section? We'll both go through them.
So we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that, yeah.
And we'll be able to go through these again and.
Yeah.
Pretty much about it, I think.
Alright, so this is a new topic of discussion tonight and for the plans.
Yeah.
Obviously, on number, on number one, we're gonna change that from, um, from eighteen to five, because that's what we decided.
Let's, I just want to make sure everybody is, we're all, like, twenty was originally blue on top. Looks blue out first.
Yeah.
And what was that? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Bob, what was the color again on this?
Okay. Blue is attached added, uh, to most checklists from the exit rates. Blue is the transfer, our best interpretation of the transfer, or currently saying red is wording that has been added, not previously included. Again, we're extrapolating that from other checklist. And the ones we put in magenta were just sort of like, we brought it over, but it's a sort of a, do you really want it?
Discussion. So what we did last night, we went through each of them and decided whether we wanted that, the wording, and then which kind of, which of the informal review variants, et cetera, needed them.
Yeah, what you apply it to is obviously in a whole other discussion.
I think we got really into the whole, we got into the concept last time, we. That's a good discussion, right? So, yeah, this first one is.
So no matter what kind of application, we only want five copies plus this.
Five, so it's five, um, the real, what, what do we call it? How much? There we go, that's the one on the. Five hard copies.
Yeah.
What's the digital?
Um, the rest of this is, um, again, standard, you know, properly certified, sealed, appropriate, like due to places, yeah, da, da, da.
On that, on the copies, um, I generally ask the applicants to forward directly a hard copy to, um, to Bob and to Jay. That just, uh, eliminates some of the costs for the, the township or the, the borough to, you know, mailing. And it gets, it speeds up the process, so it doesn't come here, sits here and like, it gets here, or somebody tells me that something's here. And then, you know, I have to mail that out and it gets into the snowmill once more time. So I don't know if there's something that we can add to the.
Do we formalize that? You mean, like, add it into here?
And then, or is that something that's difficult to?
No, that is a condition, so.
Okay. No, it's including. Include above this five.
So what we're saying is we want three, three delivered here, one delivers to, uh, engineer and one doing it to our traffic engine.
Yes.
Directly.
And one goes to me. Right, well, that would be the, one of the three copies would be, um,
Right.
One for the mayor and one then also for all of the commissions would sit in here, and then one would be in my front room.
That's not enough, though. Number, we have five. One goes to that Bob, one goes to Jay, one goes to the mayor and.
One to the commission. One to the commission, for all of the divisions.
They all share.
It's here, and they share it.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And then one for us, okay.
Full or physical copies.
And fire, emergency, because that's in here as well, isn't it?
They deliver.
Only have that requirement.
Well, I don't know if that would be a hard copy or if they, what do you think? I have a lot of electronic copies.
Is one enough for you to have for posterity?
Probably better to have two.
Maybe we should go up to seven.
I know.
Yeah, one for the fire, and then two for you.
And one, yeah, that way you, I mean, well, the fire marshal, I'm telling you, he, I send them to him and he gets back the same day, and then he returns.
So Nicholas. Policy for a person.
Right. Yes, that's true, right.
Right, because.
Well, in that case, the next, you know.
Mayor may not want the.
The next Jay, you know, the traffic engineer may not want them. I'm not sure. So, if we, yeah, it's, I always question about being specific.
Instead of the error inside of having too many than to you. I think seven is still a vast reduction from eighteen.
Yeah.
And, um, and I agree with your point now about having two for our type of copies, because then.
Maybe you have one.
Say that is. Your one.
Yeah, and then one for the public, because you never know what people do in the.
People pick them up.
Well, it's, it, then you, you run a risk of, you know, you don't wanna find, have a copy for every.
You're saying to have a copy for.
Yeah.
Like seven.
Seven.
Seven. So seven, one of which will be sent directly to board engineer and one of sent, sent directly to traffic.
Yeah.
So the back.
Unless, you know.
Back on the application, do we, do we want just five of those or seven of those?
Or check with the board secretary to see which, you know, something like that.
Well, then it just. Let's put it as the engineer and the traffic engineer direct sent to, then they can find out where he sent that, right?
I think we have the list of the board professionals in the navigation.
Right, so they know where he sent them, and then five copies come to unload.
Yeah, I just don't wanna have to have the orders be changed and checklist, you know.
I think that's, that's what I could engineer them directly.
Yeah.
Alright, so back on the first section with the number of out, do we want five or seven on that?
Seven on copies.
Application bed plans.
It should be consistent, yeah. Tell it to be for every access, technically, we got them, they estimated technically.
Yes.
Yeah.
So replacing the first section that we have five, we're gonna change it to seven.
Yes.
I don't know if there's big stormwater. Energy reports, nobody else is looking at those.
Hmm, well.
And they can be, I mean, that's just. Um, I mean, then you get into detail, so.
But can't we say all, all plans. Must be, their documents.
All supporting them.
Or documents as appropriate.
Uh, we wanna say as appropriate.
I'm just saying all documents.
Well, let's go through each one, you know, what we want, let's, you know, seven, we definitely want seven copies, the application from seven copies. Yeah, that goes with the plan.
Yeah.
Seven copies of title search, do we need that, is that we're getting them copied out?
No.
So keep that a five?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna five. D's meets and bounds descriptions.
Well.
Five, just three. Same thing on L, D's. Um, digital copy, range practice, digital, uh, so five copies of drainage couch, I mean drainage area. So we have five?
Alright.
Which one?
We're on R.
I mean, I'm, we're gonna look at it, I don't know if anybody else is gonna look at it, you, you need.
And most people, if you do wanna look at it, can do electronic.
Right.
Math as well.
My, that's free.
Free, yes.
The, 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 the submissions do not have knowledge.
Bob, we're, we're.
And they don't need.
Page two, item R.
I was mapping my hazard areas.
Thank you.
I, and that's sort of. I can beat that, that's a document.
So really that should be one.
So you said, wait, so if you back up to this, you have.
We gotta page one, we started with J, we started with B.
Item B, because that's my fault, because my old one I was looking at was that with item number one, eighteen. So I'm gonna put that away to.
So page one, item B, five copies.
Went seven.
And seven on check.
And what, what letter is that?
That's B, awesome.
Okay, and then what did you change up to that?
JK and L are gonna stay at five.
Yep.
C, now, R is gonna change to three. Now we're on S, T and U.
Well, seeing the format, I think, I think flooding is all put in this town, we should see it. And I also think the same thing with the environmental tax statement, they're really important.
I think he's understanding the application, it's five or seven.
Seven, I'm a seven, I don't, maybe for both of them.
So S, T and U, also it's.
Sure. Yes, definitely seven, just, yeah, I mean, environmental.
And I know we're gonna move Z, double A and double B, but while we've got double A there. I would say in traffic, it's, in taxi, it's seven.
Yep, yeah. Thank you, sorry for that.
I know, I, I'm gonna do it, I may as well go through it.
So are we getting rid of need of building isometrics?
No. Not sure we're removing it to, we're moving to someone.
Okay.
It goes to the next section, which is required documents to be provided on plan.
Uh, submitted without the patient. Okay. So now one there, that, that's added to item one on, on the, on the second page here.
Okay, okay, three.
At least seven.
Yep. Then now.
Yeah, the first section, all the items are by letter, in the second section, all the items by numeric. So item one is going to seven copies. And then on the plan, you certainly want the name, address, phone number of the owner and applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Name of the property, who's in charge of the property, identified property, who's in the charter fee, most recent tax map.
We want, uh, number two, decide to tell whoever, do we want that email address?
Yes, that was one of my comments.
The fax one, by the way.
Do you wanna add, you wanna add the attorney, any attorney represented?
I think it's a good idea, and your contact information.
Yeah.
On the plans.
That's, oh, no, I'm sorry.
They'll usually.
Yeah, I take that back.
They'll submit a letter.
Yeah.
And. All the plans, right, we're.
Yeah, we're on, we're on the plan section. Um, Bob, maybe, since we're gonna do that one to board engineer, one to traffic engineer. We believe front, point to the asterisk, and there somewhere, stick an asterisk by it, so we're not putting, because that'll apply to basically everything. All copies, a- and I'm not sure how to do it either, but.
Which, which have you on?
I'm on, we just talked about how many copies we're gonna give to each of these different items, but consistently, one copy of each of those is gonna be sent directly to you. And, uh, Jay.
Right.
Cause maybe we just. Yeah. Maybe we could put.
Look, no on stuff like that, might be better to put right on the application form. Where things get shared.
But see, that's, I, I don't disagree with you, maybe it's, but if this, the plan is to go down line by line. If some people don't look in the two.
Hmm.
It might be easier. If you, I, I don't know, that's, maybe I'm talking about myself.
After, after all this work, if we could add the next sentence, a delineate, if one copy must go to. One, one of the seven copies must go to the engineer, one of the seven copies must go direct, directly. And the remaining five should be sent directly, we can just put that as a sentence in.
And we could say, one, one, one of each, cause some are seven, some are five, and then just the remaining go to the town, something like that, yeah.
Well, you know, we had this thing up on top, all applications must be explicitly administrative officer, we, we just stick it up there, at least three weeks prior. It's, you know.
And I actually had a question about that, if we wanted to change that, what we want.
Okay, we wanna change it.
I don't know, but we have a forty-five day time period to review it, and again, looking at.
Well, we, at least three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. And maybe I'm getting too into the weeds on this, tell me if I am, but I, when I put my private hat on, I get clients coming and saying, but, well, we got it in three weeks before. Why aren't we on the agenda? And they don't understand that you have forty-five days to review it, so even though you got it in accordance with this checklist requirement. You still have that extra time, and again, maybe we can't legislate everything and.
Can we just put that thing in, you know, that, all if it was submitted, at least three weeks prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. Please note to the plan for this point.
Give mine, this, this, uh, box, like the initial submission and then.
Can you do something?
I, I get, we don't have to, I'm just, I'm, slip on, because, yeah, that's, that's one of those things that I, I get from clients all the time. And they just.
Two, which I do, I'll summarize the three weeks from one to forty-five days start.
Yeah.
In other words, it has to be three weeks before the date for forty-five days start.
Yes.
You've been three weeks plus forty-five.
I, I like that, yeah.
Maybe just.
No, I'm suited for, uh, uh, small heading on the checklist. Yeah, and maybe that's, that's the application.
Yeah.
I like that, that's an application issue.
Three lines of text or four lines, really six lines to make it clear, and then the checklist is warming up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That may be an application issue, yeah.
Has some, you know, standard, you know, instructions.
Yeah.
Yeah, today's question was, for, for, for asking why you went out there, yeah, well, I put it in three weeks, I have the date. Forgot to forty-five.
Exactly.
Yeah, just tell your private clients, because the board engineers are paying to buy.
You don't think I do that?
So, I, I do wanna, I just wanna go over this and forgive me if I'm missing, but mainly if you go, uh. So the three weeks we're asking for is basically so that we can get it on the agenda for completeness.
No.
No.
That's the thing.
No, go ahead, hit me with it, why, what?
Because we have a play, the land use law, Bob has forty-five days to look at that submission and either deem it complete or incomplete. Now, usually comes in well within that forty-five days, but he has forty-five days.
And the thing about it is, is if, if they submit the plan to him three weeks before the forty-five days, his forty-five days to start.
Until he gets.
Well, no, no, the forty-five days start today as submission.
Okay, well, there, we gotta make sure that's clear, because.
And that, that's where, that's where this gets confusing.
Yeah.
But the forty-five days that Bob asked to review is, doesn't.
Data proceed.
Once, once he's done that review and send that to us, there can be a delay until it gets the next board meeting.
Well, that's why you can't wait forty-five, can't wait the forty-four days.
Is that, no or not, no.
That's why I usually.
Yeah, we've all, you know, what's, what's, what's the deadline, and when do we add, what's our meeting schedule, whatever, there's something I should cancel meetings, somebody, you know, so.
Oh, I just found that it's, the forty-five, the, the, the meeting, the completeness has to happen within that forty-five days.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Because if you don't, if the board doesn't act within forty-five days, technically, automatically by default, they're complete.
And the board can always ask for more additional information at, once you get.
Absolutely.
About forty-four.
We all.
And not many applicants are going to keep forcing the hand of the board and.
I wonder if we had a gap.
Can I ask this, why, why is that there?
Why is what there?
Why is that must be submitted at least three weeks?
You're just advising people on what the board policy is for submissions.
Why, though?
Why is it forty-five days?
Why is it, yeah, well, because forty-five days before the next schedule, it's just confusing.
Because we don't want them to submit an application, but then not submit the documents only two days before the meeting and not give them time to review them. It's not quite.
But no one says it's on the next meeting, because he has forty-five days.
But a lot of people do not understand, well, I put my, my application in, and why am I not on tomorrow's night meeting, you know, the, the next meeting?
So maybe we need, I feel like this is an issue, not the checklist, because the answer is not simple, it's not a tool I know.
No.
The answer is, you know, providing information to people on, as part of the application, like maybe there's an update, I forget.
Maybe we write a little summary or something.
Like there's application, you know, board policy, I don't know, application process, something like that, that's like a cover sheet for the application.
Maybe what we need to say on the application is that you're, once submitted, your, your application will be heard. Within the forty-five day window, but not necessarily at the next meeting. That would cover it, because, yeah, it doesn't necessarily, it could be the second meeting after you apply within, is within the forty-five days, and that's. Logically, the one that's gonna hurt to give Bob time, right?
And they also know what it is, I mean, if it's a simple application, you know, now we're gonna have a checklist for everything, but if it's a simple application, you may get it done a week. More complex ones you may need.
Or if it's an amended cycle, and you have robs of the documents that are already on. Oh, exactly, it's difficult to make a rule for. And what we try, we're trying to say that they have to allow sufficient time for review by our, um.
And maybe it doesn't, and maybe it comes out of here and is addressed as an application.
Better. Must be submitted, have to, by, how about at least?
I just think that whole line should be deleted, that out of there, because it's, it gives people the impression that they have to submit items three weeks before a meeting in order to get heard on the meeting. On that meeting, and they expect to be on that meeting, because I can't tell you the number of times they've said, we submitted it twenty-two days before, why aren't we on? Cause that's not how it works, but it said it right here.
So, so that's, the language needs to be.
It says that, please. It does, but they don't hear that.
But it doesn't explain, it's not why, it, it doesn't say anything about because, in order to have review by an engineer, it's sufficient time to pass it.
I don't know if you're ever gonna get through those some, some.
You're probably not.
So at least it gives something to point to, to, you know, say, here's where.
Gives the attorney something to say.
Cause we want it out of.
I think that my, my, the attorneys always like that, no, I like it out of there, and I think.
Take it out, because if they can.
Put it on the app. Okay, so you come off the checklist.
Yeah. Yeah.
And both, both.
We'll add it to the application rather than the checklist, keep the checklist clean and simple.
And, and be exactly that.
Alright, right, given that I have, um, we're aiming, we're aiming to be out of fan. Let's keep moving.
Sorry, I didn't need to do that.
No, I didn't make that to be, so I'll just, just.
Forget to, it was right here.
Right, um. Alright, um, you just made her whole night use falling asleep.
So I think we got to the, to, three.
I think we got to three, so.
Number four, this is documentation that must be on the plan, and the plan sheet must name, name the development, total area of the development, acres and square feet. Delaney A track boundary with a heavy solid line, date of original preparation and all revisions of each document submitted with a number of sheets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, north hour in reference meridian, graph written scale, number proposed lots, the area in square feet or size of building. G, check zone, schedule existing zoning criteria, proposed conditions including bulk requirements such as lot area, da, 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 et cetera.
Going back to F, Bob, we want area and square feet and size of building, or, or?
Well, this could be a site plan or could be a subject.
Um, okay, you have, got it, got it, got it.
Um. Uh, track zone with its related, uh, criteria, H tax map sheet block, lot numbers. County name, municipality and street location, uh, I reference benchmark identified and shown. J, name and signature license sealed, basically the person's preparing the plans, and then that's the documentation that has to be on the plan sheets.
Mm-hmm.
Five is at the date of ownership and certification of owner noted on the plans parentheses, other than the applicant. As followed, in other words, if the, uh, if the applicant is not the owner, there needs to be a certification on the plan that I am the owner of the property and consented to the property in the application. Now, we ask for that on the plan itself, which is probably a good idea, that the owner is actually set, looking at the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I approved this, you know.
Yeah, cause I have this statement of ownership as part of the application, and I was thinking that too, but you're right, that at least. Shows that they've reviewed that particular plan and authorizes admission in that plan.
Uh, block for signature.
Fine, like, just like some of these have, are not checked off for non-conforming use. And then number three isn't checked off the concept plan, like, why don't we have them for like non-conforming uses also? What's the?
Um, well, here again, uh, uh, everything on the right, pretty much, on the right, the subdivision site plan and the variance. Kind of came from, well, not the variance, but, kind of came through your current checklist, you could, you could eliminate these or add. Again, we're talking about the items, what's required, what app, type of application you apply it to is the, is the second part of the conversation, that, that's what the question you're.
So what I think those three, to answer that question, is because for a concept. Plan, you wouldn't usually have property owners, because you're not at that point yet where you're gonna be no time, and you don't have a plan, nine times out of ten. But you can always ask for it and you can put it on here if you want to.
When we looked at the first section a couple of weeks ago, we did both. Both sides concurrently, right?
Let me, let me slow down.
So you just did a load, load of lines on it once, I guess, so. I have questions on four, why, why is some of, why there's the gaps in the non-conforming use? If the plans must identify, there seems, wouldn't we just have that same rule for any plans that come in? Why wouldn't we want?
And then they could ask for.
Why wouldn't we want the north hour just because it's for a non-conforming use?
Well, a lot of times with non-conforming use, it wouldn't even have a.
Couldn't they just ask for?
And you deal with what if, yeah. I mean, if you really don't think you need it. And the fact that it's not on here doesn't conclude the board.
It's easier, it's easier for the board to forget about that, it's easier for the applicant to say, can I have a waiver on that?
Well, and if we're gonna do that, then, then I think item one, we don't, we don't check off non-conforming use, then it makes sense.
Yeah, they, they don't need to provide purpose if it's a.
Well, if they're not gonna. I guess the question, do we want a plan for a non-conforming use? We ask the question, so we start right with one. Because if the answer to that is not necessarily.
Oh, no, that you necessarily do.
I don't think so.
Your smile one worked out because they had plans.
Correct.
Mid.
Correct.
But I could foresee, uh, you know, something just talking about the tendency of an existing building, that what the, what the plan looks like or looks like is not really relevant. If they can demonstrate that they had been there.
Yep.
Just one building.
Yeah.
Maybe this.
Well, keep in mind, this, this whole statute we're gonna go through is documentation that's on a plan. So if we don't. Don't want a plan, nothing is gonna apply.
Correct, right. Which probably makes sense because we wouldn't require a plan. For an application for non-conforming use, because nine times out of ten, what they're doing there is just showing that it's been used. So this is in a use variance. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, which they have to show it was legal at one point and then continued to be. Used that way without being abandoned over the present day whenever for the board. They may use plans that they have to show you that. But there's no site plan aspect.
So. To our benchmark is what, what I'm in my mind, I'm thinking back to is the your smile document. That was, that's like our benchmarks for a non.
And you wanted to, to mark that site as a benchmark and we basically said, we don't wanna do that because that's not what. We are here to talk about.
I would just mean, I like the way he presents the. Presents it.
Yes.
He didn't present, he didn't, what I said is different was, it presented plans, it was a document, so that's what we're saying, we don't need plans, we need that kind of document to explain, right?
The other guy coming in after words with the.
Yeah.
With the house on the corner of Graham and Main. Trying through the apartments for a hundred years, whatever it was.
Yeah, I know, I won't, because the idea behind this is to, for this to cover any eventuality, so.
I would, I guess I, I'm sorry, I would say the idea behind this is to cover most eventualities. Because we can always ask for more information.
Right.
I mean, most of them, not, you know.
So let's think of the general one where we do get plans.
I mean, Mr. Brewer seems to think that it's not a checklist we can't ask for.
Well, you can't ask for, for completeness, yeah. But you can't ask for it ultimately, maybe one of the things to do is, you see how you have the variance statute reference under variance? Put the section sixty eight under. Non-conform, the certificate. But at least they've got that benchmark for what it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
I like that a lot. The rest are sitting around so we know.
So it's the same forty fifty five D, but it's sixty eight, sixty eight, not forty, it's forty two, the eight.
Forty five D to sixty eight.
Yeah.
And then don't check off anything under non-conforming use at this point.
Right. Yeah. Because what my concern with that column having some checks and some not, was that it, it looks like we're asking for a different kind of plan with that. And I think if we, if we want plans, I want all of these things that Bob wants identified on that, right? So all the things, they all need to be on.
Significant consistencies throughout the variance and the site plan, I think that's okay.
Just for the record, just for the record, this column.
But I just don't know why we don't.
This column was the old signing column, we just changed the name on it, we didn't change it.
That'll make sense.
Reason why there was odd checks everywhere. Because I was, I was just looking at something stupid like, why wouldn't I want the north hour when I plan? For that, but I do want it on this. Something simple, they just put all that on a drawing.
Yeah, so feel free on this non-conforming. Wasn't you want, was one you don't want.
And I think that goes to the A and B too, the appeal and the interpretation.
Where's appeal, where, what?
So under variance.
Oh, A and B is appeal.
Yep. A is, A is appeal, B is interpretation.
So if they're appealing a variant, because I don't want.
So very, what you're appealing is the determination of the zoning officer?
That comes under A.
That's A.
Okay.
B is an interpretation of a section of your ordinance which could be in connection with an appeal or not.
Okay. What do we want on drawings though?
Yeah, I think, I kind of feel like it's the same thing as non-conforming. Yeah.
There's a significant.
Yeah.
But then we had an appeal and we did want a site plan layout and.
Which you can always ask for.
Right, okay, so we leave it blank now, but we know that if it comes, this is the list for which we can say to them.
After completeness, so.
Say we want these items.
Yeah, the checklist is if they supply every single item on the checklist. Or get a waiver for that. Then they're deemed complete. Then they start the application before you guys, if as you're going forward, you realize that you can't make a decision without X, Y, Z. Even though it wasn't crossed off on this checklist, you can say to them, we feel we can't make a decision without this.
Right.
And then it's up to them, if they wanna run the risk of you making a decision without providing it, it's their own risk. Ten, they're gonna say, okay, we understand, here you go.
Yeah, and board members. For any application. Even if this checklist shows that boys didn't say we thought we needed one, if a particular application comes up, board members can say that completeness is gonna actually. I think the light examination would mean is that.
Not a complete.
Oh, okay. Stay there complete, but we can ask for it.
And they deem it complete and say like, you know, before you get to the public hearing.
Absolutely, yes, that's exactly the way it can be done, just to give them a heads up and say, it's not part of this, but we could tell based on what we looked at. You know, usually for a non-conforming use, you wouldn't need something like that, but based on what we're seeing, I think you're gonna need it, so can you? People get that, you can definitely.
That's what I'm talking about.
But it's still up to that.
Right.
Whereas you could dig your heels in, you know, on anything else. That is specifically marked on the second page.
I was just trying to put it on record, that's why I wanted to study, even if we decide not to put a check on this box, it doesn't conclude them from. Asking for that for a particular.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Okay. Excellent. So having said that, did, Bob, you wanted us to go through the certificate part and decide what checkmarks we want?
We should, if, to what we said before, we really should be doing both, I suppose, you know, what, what the item requires and what types of applications you wanna go for.
Alright, so shall we go, go back to each one and see whether the checkmarks make sense?
I think the previous one.
We did, yeah, the previous one, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm. On the blue, on page three.
Just as a general, not specific, but as a general guidance, pro, pro, I think Kara said this report. Whatever information you would want on an, an appeal or an A or B on the variance thing, you would probably want the same thing for the certificate. For not non-conforming use.
Yeah, they'd be similar, I think. You're right.
Yeah.
So we're blacked it out, so if we're gonna ask for it for one or not ask for it for one, it should be consistent. So like if we go to four, we don't need that. Eleven B for non-conforming use. We go to page four.
We're on page four. I don't know, I'm just saying.
I feel like I'm.
No, you wanna, because you missed the last one, so now you get to move on. Get all your comments out. Um, on this page. On page three, I don't know where we jumped ahead, Bob, but this says. Number eight. Map drawn at scale, all, and then it says in red, all plans must be folded. Doesn't that apply to the wording on line four? Why does that only apply to the map? That's the hard, that applies for the hard copies, doesn't it? Plans must be folded with a block date, revision date showing. I'm just wondering why that word ended up putting that line.
You might want to put that on one.
Yes. And that, that red, those red words only really relate to the hard copies, so. Am I making sense?
Well, you, you call, again, this, this document is, it's a fourth, fifth generation document, so.
I get it, I get it. I'm just going for some low hanging fruit here, like that doesn't seem to, those red words don't seem to make sense in that particular space, but they do make sense. In line four or in line one.
I would put it on one.
I do like that all plans should be folded and.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I love it.
Package. Seven of this or eighteen of this and eighteen of each thing and I don't have to.
Yeah.
Oh, I understand.
I think that will then.
You want that, that all plans moved up to item one.
Yes. And I think. You make a good point.
I love this.
Add some word in, I want there to say eighteen, uh, seven sets of plans. So that that means they have to provide them as a set.
I even like it, I mean. Do everything, so if you need seven copies and seven copies of your application, the plans, your stormwater. Now, it's, I mean, that makes it so easy.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't have to figure out, oh, this one doesn't have the stormwater, this one no sense.
But you're right, we should have, they should be collated by, you should be a big, a set of drawings and sets of drawings. Love that, yeah, let's add that in. Reminize your work. Because when, they can order that at the printers when they get them done, or they get.
Or they can do that.
Alright, so we may have missed things above that because I jumped and saw that and jumped in. Um, you have to know on this. Makes sense to me. But it says, is item six, is that block for signature on the plan still? Because I, I. Have I ever, have I found a piece of paper with all the resolution, have I ever?
Once they did the compliance with all of the conditions of the resolution. Um, Flemington Realty is almost done with, um, they should be coming in. That's when that's fine.
Okay.
Once Beth and Bob and Kara all sign off.
It's a record. Right, sorry. Alright, so we need to go through the, the checks, don't we, on that, on that left hand side here then? Anybody have any strong feelings about any of the, uh, absence or? Presence of any of those checkmarks, any of those boxes? Bob, did you say that?
Keep in mind on the completeness thing, there's three columns there, that they provided it, or they believe it's not applicable, or they're asking for a waiver.
Right.
So some of these things still, if an applicant says, well, that's just not applicable, they just put an A.
Yeah, that's what this is gonna make it easier for us to.
Say, well, you know what, you're right, it's not, well, you're right, no, it is applicable, you gotta.
You gotta, you gotta provide it, absolutely.
Yeah.
So Bob, you were saying that the certificate column and the variance A, B column should probably be identical. So we should change that to match that. Like erase some of those checkmarks. Remove them, are they? I have a question over everybody, on the, on the concept plan, do we need seven copies of a concept plan, Lewis? We haven't really done a concept plan. Situation.
You know what, if, if, if you get down to that level of, of nuance, we're, we're gonna be here all year and this checklist is gonna be. You know.
No, I was just. We'll leave it, we'll leave it on and they can ask for a waiver. Alright, then. Move to page four, are we ready to move to page four?
Um, I'm sorry, on the plan sizes, number eight, is fifteen by twenty one, is that a real size?
Yeah, that's the medium size sheet.
It was like by seventeen, that's what, that's what I was thinking, but I don't, I really don't. I haven't seen the fifteen and twenty one.
That, that's, I forget what they call it, but that's, that's, that's a standard, was a standard, again, this, this, this checklist's been around a while, so.
Yeah, but I think eleven by seventeen, you, you know, like, that's apparently standard size for any copy of that, most copies.
Right. Is thirty by forty two is the big.
Well, it's a, it's, keep in mind, it's, it's a scale of the drawing. If you're looking for a thirty scale drawing. Eleven by seventeen, you're not gonna show much. So it's really the scale. We can get rid of this, the sheet size was just really more to.
I just don't know if there's that much paper stock in fifteen by twenty one anymore.
Well, it's, again, it's an option, sheet size. You know, there, there, that one, that one to work.
Wait, this is just related to the, the map of the plan, right, of the, a, a, a map of the. Um, area in, in note, in the, of the consideration. So what does, what does thirteen, that's thirty feet, is it, that's in the, what does that mean?
Thirty scale.
Thirty.
One inch equals thirty.
So you want.
One inch equals thirty, one inch equals fifty.
But then why are we defining which sheet size just for the map?
It, it's, it was just the way. It's just the way it's been forever.
Okay. Oh, that's.
Engineers understand.
Right, same, right, okay, on that note.
It's kind of like an E trap. It's kind of like an E trap, too.
So, so I have a question about that, so what does it mean then when it's on the, um, the concept plan that it's just a check? And not a specific?
Oh, concept plan.
It could be anything.
It's, it's just, it, it, it is not, it's just showing a concept for how somebody wants to develop property, you could put a scale.
Right.
You could probably, you'd probably go with like a fifty scale or something.
Okay.
If it's just, you know, you could, you could certainly do that, you wanna put a fifty scale on the concept?
Not, I was just curious about that, that was just my own question.
My guess is that the concept column was added at some point, when this was, that was done, that they just didn't bother to put a scale. So we can, we can make that fifty.
Well, Matt has drawn the scale of thirty or fifty, but then the next line, we say the key map. Must be not less than one to two hundred, one inch to two hundred. Scale, is that right?
Yeah, it's just the key map that's on the plan.
Okay. Right. Do you have any other example without that?
Oh, absolutely.
Um, well, you said there was a part that would need our attention, the traffic circulation elements from master plan, right, and that, what does that mean? Everyone, what?
Where are you?
Well, probably in the borough, they're probably, I'm probably highlighting, it probably in the borough, that does probably doesn't mean anything.
No, I think that was from the Clinton, that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because this is just, it's saying on the map. Traffic circulation.
Through roads or anything.
So we don't need that, we can live like that about that. We can just say it includes zoning boundaries, we're asking the top key that has zoning boundaries with no traffic circulation on it. Alright, page four. And it's not still things that are on the plan.
So item ten is all your topographical requirements. Where you would want it, where you don't necessarily need it. Like for example, A, um, contradicts five for intervals interpreted from. Uh, you wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't want that, actually, that's some stuff in here that doesn't belong. Uh, you would, you may, that might be applicable if you're just doing the C or D variance. For minor size, actually, these are the ways to keep, because you, you, you wouldn't want that, you want the more level of details for the, um. I think we have these reversed, actually.
It's not checked off for minor.
No, but it, 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 it should be on the minor, but not on, on the, the two foot intervals, so the more detail. You would want those on the major, but somehow it's got mixed up.
Well, these do a very similar.
And they're both required on the concept plan.
Yeah.
They did either for proposed development.
Oh, I see.
Mm-hmm. On toes at five.
Maybe you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't have to cover two different things. So you, you wouldn't have it up there.
Alright, do you want to clean that up then?
Yeah, we'll, we'll clean it. Yeah, I'm not sure how.
Alright, plan shown existing and proposed streets and street names. If anybody has any comments or needs, jump up. So, oh, the text, yeah.
Yeah, this would typically be applicable to like a major, a major development subdivision or, 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 or. Even to some.
Mm-hmm.
So we can take them off the concept plan?
All of those.
Yes, definitely.
The one that went to this level.
And the certificate for site drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah. Why would we only want twelve for a D variance? Some of them want existing property lines for any site plans as well?
You, you would want, that's a whole new art column we added in.
Yeah.
But it, we, we never had it on our checklist before, so I did the checklist, I, yeah, you need to decide what you want that to be.
So we want to show the existing property lines on. Minor and major site plans.
Well, you, you definitely need it in a major, you need it really for any of the subdivisions.
And subdivision.
You need it for any of the subdivisions.
What about the variance? We've only currently, it's only on a D variance. Would it be appropriate on a C variance? Depends what the C variance would be.
C variance would just be like a setback, right?
I thought we would want existing property line on any drawing.
I mean, that might not be there to leave in a line of the place away from.
That's what I mean, I, I might say, yeah, I don't see why we would not want to have that. So let's put it on anything. And then they can.
Desperately.
Say they don't want it, yeah, yeah. Um.
Keep in mind, twelve is just for existing property lines, thirteen is something similar to this for existing, you were, and proposed boundary and easement information.
Well, it turns, it, it doesn't, does the existing and proposed wording apply to the easement too? So it's existing easement information.
Right.
Yeah, so I do wanna, we wanna see existing easements on the plans, on the plans, right? I think so. That's what.
Yeah, we can, we can make, well, just existing, we can make thirteen just proposed and get the easement.
Oh, okay, put the easement in twelve as well, but make twelve property lines and easement to mean existing, yeah. I think that's clean, I like that. Existing and then proposed into thirteen.
We could actually almost combine those two together.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, we could, we could probably combine those together.
No, I suppose it's not.
Right, yeah, but then they'll know that.
Yes.
They won't be on there.
Yeah, we can knock that one down.
We can look at somebody like Richard Brown. I like that. Sorry.
Yeah.
Excite, um, that was a lot areas. We already say that. We're adding that we want to put it in square feet and acres. The, the area.
Like this, well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Number sixteen, Mike, do we have any septic systems in Flemington? I don't.
I don't, I don't know what you do, again, that can't.
I'm sorry, Mayor, couldn't hear you.
Do you have any, any septic systems in the borough of Flemington?
Septic?
Septic. We have private wells, do we have any, any septic?
There's random septic.
Yes, there's one left, the, uh, little log cabin on, uh, Allen Street.
Really?
Yes. Do what we want.
Do a fix like a property dummy.
By, one on Allen Street?
Correct.
How are you saying, change that hundred feet to two hundred?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I thought you said you put us, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. We know there is one, so you may wanna keep it anyway, but if you buy a property with the last property on the value of the borough.
Right.
You may have a septic within.
You may have a septic within two, yeah. Well, let's leave that pink wording in, let all that pink wording in, right? Location of existing wells and septic system as well, so. We won't see.
And get it on, it, it, we just check.
Yeah, this, if it's not inside, that's fine. Location of all man-made and natural features. Less historic lowlands within two hundred, dedicated answer. Woody areas, not. These are just suggestions, anyway, I don't like that.
Number twenty, we don't allow anybody to put it in private well anymore, so I think we could take that magenta language out, right, Mike?
That's correct, Mayor.
You take that out, because we don't allow them at all. By ordinance.
If there was a proposed well, then it would be.
We don't allow it.
We would be doing it for ourselves.
If we were, we're gonna allow private wells at all, right, thirty-six pre, thirty-nine pre existing wells.
Same to them. So get rid of all of that pink language in twenty.
Give them a genta. I think, plan drawings of all existing and proposed public water. Mike, you wanna leave that in, right? At number twenty?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I just said just.
Does, does there ever have similar language, Bob? In this document? Well, this says water, do we have?
Well, then twenty-one is storm sewer. Plan of.
Oh, I'm sure that's your song, which.
Oh, no, that's just storm sewer, general sewer.
Yeah, we just verify that we have a line like that for sewer.
Well, why don't we do public water and sewer?
Uh, nineteen is, uh, existing and proposed drainage and utility layouts. Sewer would be, would be, would be a utility.
Oh, it'd be in there, yeah, it'd be in nineteen, so between nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, we've got drainage, utility, public water and. Proposed store, and storm water. Including.
Bob, do, do we have a, anywhere in this document, a calculation for, for this coverage?
If there's only requirement, yeah, it's a zoning requirement.
On the bulk table, yeah.
It is, okay.
If the zone had, if it's, if the zone has a requirement for, for this coverage. The section back on top, that zoning criteria is where they would, okay.
Um, Bob, eighteen and nineteen, do we need to combine those? Is there a reason to separate out?
Uh, plan drawings of all existing and concept wall, proposed drainage and utility layouts.
And then nineteen says, plan and profile drawings of existing proposed drainage, I mean, to, to, to draw it to care. We can combine those, right?
Well, one has the actual check mark, so not requiring that fifteen.
Well, yeah, we could just have the new eighteen, nineteen include all those check marks. I'm just saying, we don't need two lines. Nineteen and nineteen.
No, we can get rid of eighteen and nineteen now.
Yeah.
Yeah, here again, it's another situation where eighteen or nineteen, for any of the criteria, it should be one or the other, it shouldn't be both.
Yeah.
It's like for a minor site plan, we say, uh, it's being repetitive, plan profile drawings of, of drainage, utility layouts, and then we're also applying it to nineteen. Essentially says the same thing.
Yeah, I just wanna combine eighteen and nineteen, because they effectively say the same thing, just with that detail and the scale on nineteen, isn't it right? It's, and you, and the fact that you said plan and profile drawings, as opposed to just plan drawn and routine.
Right.
Why don't we just say? Using nineteen.
Yeah, I guess we, we, we could, we, we could combine that line together and make it applicable, so.
Yeah.
Then I do, and then you have to check variance, uh, D as well. So we always got that one.
Yeah, the new eighteen slash nineteen.
Yeah, that came from another checklist, because we don't have a D. You remember, we don't have a, a checklist for you, for use variance.
Mm-hmm.
So we kind of brought that in from the town of Clinton checklist, and it's, again, that's why you gotta, that's what the exercise we're going through here, trying to edit out. What's what makes sense and what doesn't make sense.
And that's a good example of one of those situations where you may wanna ask for some sort of site plan. Because you may not be able to determine if that particular use is appropriate for that site without seeing. How they're gonna lay it out.
Mm-hmm.
At least from a concept. You know, perspective, then they actually come back, you know, or, you know, if they're gonna bifurcate, they'll come back for a full-blown site plan, but. You know, that's, it's not unreasonable to wanna see some sort of a plan or something like that, so you know that. It's hard to use a site plan that.
These things are all important for the plan, because you, you're showing all the, the current utilities, and we go through all of them, eighteen through to the next page, you've got. Drainage, utility, public water, storm sewer, gas, and then on the next page, twenty-three is electricity. So those, those things all need to be identified on that. Alright, we're on page five, or do we need?
Well, just example, on twenty-two for the gas, we, we don't, that came from another check, you don't need to know profile gas lines.
Okay.
Just, why are they gonna stick them on the plan?
Do we need, alright.
So state twenty-two out?
No, just take the, the magenta and profile.
Behind profile. Is that the same as electric?
Oh, next to you. Yeah. Yeah, you don't really need the profile.
Not really, and I thought of that, but then I stopped myself in. Because each place might have only some, so it's, I think it's easier just to section them out with a separate line each. Each utility, each thing that's mentioned on between eighteen and twenty-three. How do you feel about that? Do you think that's right?
No.
So have a separate line item for these specific items, I like that too. Alright, so then twenty-four becomes the, um, impervious cover at some level, doesn't it? The locations, attempted percolation.
This is relating to your stormwater regulations.
Yeah.
Your stormwater regulations, depending on the site, it's simply, you have, you have to do soil testing.
Right.
This is, you know, you're showing the location, um, of all attempted, again, percolation will come out, permeability will go in. Uh, per, per, permeability and soil data, sort of our violation, professional engineer for the stormwater management facilities and storage. We're citing the D E P section.
Right, is it appropriate for plans to show? Um. The proposed impervious cover for a plan, do you know what I mean? Like, have it identified as a number on the plan?
Yeah, again, it's a zoning board.
Yeah. Okay, alright. Okay. Right. So all this new, the blue text was added.
That's coming out of your current checklist.
So on twenty-four, you're just, you're just adding in detail about what, that they should have come from a licensed professional engineer and things, and referencing the. D E P. Okay. Right, landscaping, twenty-six. What landscape am I required? This then trees will be removed. The frozen ones get over in a waiting plan. That one's over in all.
Yes, I think on, on V would be, I think, you, to look at a landscaping plan, you do wanna see what the grade.
I totally agree, yeah, I think that's a great addition.
Yeah, because if it's really steep, you want extra thing to hold it together, yeah, I like that.
Taking that, not forming use.
Yeah, we gotta go to that whole.
Yeah.
Whatever's checked in that column.
Yeah.
Came from something else, yeah, it's not, nothing to do with any of it.
Is it important to us, guys? Um, I don't know enough about plants, but whether they're container grown, bold and go that, or do we need that to be identified? That's important.
It's typically on a landscape plan.
So just leave it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna need a separate landscaping plan for street shade trees, I feel like that could be on a single landscaping plan. I, I think C could be combined with B, I don't necessarily wanna see two different landscape plans that show two sets of trees.
Yeah, because part of the words in C is covered in A with the tree preservation details anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if street trees are required, they will be part of.
Right.
So, yeah, we don't, actually, we don't even need C.
Don't need C at all, no, right, take out the whole C, yeah.
Well, except it does have the tree preservation.
Well, we have tree preservation in what, in A?
That is in A?
You are.
Yep, 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 okay.
Alright. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven is something we never had, we should, it only applies to major subdivisions.
Okay. And twenty-eight, I'm guessing.
Um.
Is it a similar thing?
Certification block indicated map file in law, that plan meets the requirements of the map file in law. While required certifications included. That's, again, that's a combination of wording from several sources, we need to probably clean up the grammar.
But we need twenty-seven and twenty-eight as separate wording items for the, to be clear, do we?
Uh, yeah, you really need both, uh, certification blocks, yeah, there are a bit too, well, again, they came from different sources, so they are. There's a lot of duplicity, we, we can probably combine those together to.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna muddy the waters on, on, again, to them.
The idea was to bring in, because our checklist was somewhat archaic and whatnot, we brought in stuff from someplace else, so you. This is a situation where you just ended up with almost two, saying the same thing in two different.
I think actually what they're saying there, alright, it's probably came from two separate places, but if you look, that check for twenty-seven is just for minor. Because minor, technically, you can just perfect by Ds. They're saying, if you're gonna use a map as opposed to.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Complies with the.
Five looks, it has to be.
So it's a very specific, we can.
So actually, you, you do need twenty.
I would say you need both.
Yeah.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do it that way.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine, appropriate details to borough and state standards.
That's usually construction details.
Okay.
And you only want those on the major subdivisions and site fees.
Okay.
Uh, so instead of a control plan, you would pretty much want on a, um. Yeah, on the major, on the major subdivisions and site funds. Well, you could require it, I mean, it could, might be required on the minors. Could, could, yeah, it could be on a minor. Again, it's only if there's more than five thousand square feet, so again, if somebody's coming in application, no matter what they are, if they're under five thousand, they're just saying, I'll tackle.
Okay.
Uh, thirty-one, location, purpose and restrictions of any easements or land reserved for any uses. Um.
Is that, how is that different from just down?
Oh, mine not, please, forgive me.
Sorry. No, that's, we put, we wanted them to add all proposed easement calculations, and we also wanted the. In thirteen, we wanted easement information shown, and then this one says.
I take thirty-one to be existing, fifteen's proposed.
Can't just say.
Is it?
proposed?
Yeah.
So isn't that, yeah, isn't that included in the existing one, thing twelve, yeah, the existing?
Well, fifteen, it just says it's the, it, area of the proposed, proposed easement calculations in square feet. And this one says, a plan indicating the location and complete purpose restrictions of any easements or land reserved for any use. You, 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 you could combine them.
What, put thirty-one with fifteen?
We, we, you, you, we could.
Keep thirty-one and get rid of fifteen.
Well, those are proposed, do we want, um. We want, we want to also in the exist, we didn't, when we did twelve, we said existing property lines, deleted. I mean, that needs to be existing property lines and easements, doesn't it?
We put, yeah, I have that note.
Do you have that note?
Yeah.
So really, it goes in with twelve, doesn't it? There's thirty-one. It binds with twelve.
Yeah, we, we could actually get rid of fifteen and just in thirty-one, just put, um. Uh, plan. Indicating the location and the area.
Existing and proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah, like fifteen goes in thirteen, because we said that was.
And just put under thirty-one for the location and area.
There's like the twelve, thirteen, fifteen and thirty-one, I guess, combine them to make more sense. Is your stormwater management plans? And then. We're saying that the plan, the property line needs to be done by a land surveyor, so is that some detail that we just need to add in somewhere else?
Usually you have have a survey plan, becomes part of the site sometime, but generally trying to get survey in as a separate plan.
Oh, okay, so this is the survey. Okay, yeah, I think. Far to be signed and sealed.
It would be, yes, it's gonna be, it's gonna be submitted.
Well, that goes back to item one, that all documents have to be signed and sealed by appropriate.
Yeah, like something to increase as certified as being actually by a. Yes, yeah. Those great in plan.
Based on spot and finish floor elevation, elevations of corners of buildings, paved area.
Okay.
And given the girl relatively flat, either for your show, contour show at one foot interval.
Okay, we're on page six then?
We are.
Sign standards. This seems logical to kind of basically pull out what's in the sign requirements and like list it on the drawing, so it's clear. Which ones they feel is is relevant, we can work with that, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion on some of the language for it? Schedule of required sign standards such as assigned area, assigned height, and then I think instead of a new sentence, it would be setbacks. I think size is duplicative of area and. Is elevate, I'm not sure what elevation, is that supposed to be a rendering of the, or is?
Yeah, like a totally.
Okay, yeah. And then I think we should, we can just say, method of illumination as well and color temperature. I'd like to get that in there too.
Alright, so in the beginning, which has such a sign area, put sign area, location.
Yeah, like for a H L D, I wanna make sure it's a warm instead of a cool.
Should we, that should we, do we need to have all of that in there, so should we say a schedule of required sign standards as. Draw as identifying in our ordinance, because then they would just have to pull.
So if the board disagrees, that's, uh, I don't feel that strongly about it, but that's information I always ask, I I'm trying to ask for every application, my color temperature, their LEDs.
All I was trying to avoid there is having two places where these things are all listed out, if we've already got a place where they're all listed out. Having them listed here and then missing one that's in the ordinance, they might claim that we don't need the thing. Rather just reference the ordinance, was that what you were saying?
Or it doesn't say it in the ordinance. But we're saying things that are already in state law. Maybe it's, you know, as required by the ordinance, including but not limited to.
Yes.
You know.
And then you can add your color thing in.
Yeah, or is that too vague for you guys to? I am wary of having including but not limited to. But I think it's pretty straightforward, it's a sign, you know, there's only so many different ways to get regular.
Way you wanted it to be, as well as code.
And I'm sorry, to be fair, I was looking at illumination in there.
Yeah.
The color temperature is really, Bob brought that up, really key for lighting rather than sign specifics. Yeah, method of illumination is appropriate. For the sign.
Yeah.
Lighting, I I do recommend. In thirty-six. Yeah, sorry about that, yeah, I got ahead of myself.
So, so we could just. Those things we have that, we have that.
You want something that's not in order.
For lighting, I do, for lighting, I do, I said color temperature for the sign.
Unless it's a little bit too strong, I'm gonna just leave it as it's written, it's time, I mean.
From thirty-five, your color temperature. And thirty-five does have setbacks.
Yeah. I think location could, um, it could replace setbacks, because that's really what.
Thirty-seven is probably the architectural plant, that's probably where you wanna stick in your, uh, your renderings.
Yeah, I think that should be, uh, required.
It says mounted renderings there too, do we want to remove the word mounted then, is that, do we want that?
Yeah, I don't think we want mounted.
Big, um, you know, big public, they can choose to mount them and bring them, isn't that what we're saying with those?
Right, yeah, but I mean, you can.
But we're not up some saying, we don't need them.
No, 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 but if we're requiring them. To be submitted electronically, then they should have them electronically with their hearing.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, take out, take out required mounted render.
I just want to prevent them from gluing it onto the boards. Yeah.
Alright, so thirty-seven, all we're doing is taking out.
We don't need mounted renderings, but like it's, the the drawings, plans should include renderings.
Yes.
Of the.
Addition of renderings of the site plan subdivision by, do you want buildings to render as other buildings?
Yes. Yes, yeah. I'd rather have a rendering building first on.
Right.
Yeah.
But I think it was more of a primary findings inside as well.
So rendering, renderings of building site plan subdivision by.
We're gonna ask for the renderings of buildings, this is a new building or a refurbishment or a redo, we wanna ask for them to also list. All materials.
Again, they could always ask for a waiver or they could, you know. They always ask for the waiver.
Yeah. If I should refer into a new item, we should have for them to identify all building materials, all proposed, existing and proposed building materials.
Yeah. There's a lot that could be provided in this thirty-seven, it's it's very simplistic for what we. Architectural plans have been a lot of things.
I definitely wanna see materials and colors.
Well, you know what, we can take, we can take out on the last sentence, there are also indicating two simple buildings square footage. We said that someplace else, we could just say, take out square footage and put building on materials, and just you propose building materials.
And that's under which one?
What's with thirty-seven? Somewhere back before this, we said you have to show building area.
And I'm trying to think of things that we insist on them putting in. Like, is this a place to put in, if we often have to ask them to identify the.
Yeah, I I I would say I feel like architectural could be one of these, um, like thirty-seven, A.
Yes.
Because we should have building materials, building cover of colors. I'd also like where it's residential in nature, I'd like to have them identify the affordable housing units and where they're located.
Can we always ask? Whichever way they're showing up, the the hat, the sizes, right?
Yep. Even windows.
Windows.
Alright, that is gonna rewrite thirty-seven.
Right, I think it needs a lot more, we could have a lot, it needs a lot of lines on that, I think. Well, we could have a line in there, we could have put a line in there, if it's in the historic district, that it should, you know, reflect as well, especially.
But I don't think that's a complete side up. Right, but it's an requirement that we're hoping to, but. I don't know what to ask for, that we can check, like, check.
Oh, okay.
Just a consider, consideration of, um, location.
That's, that's, I think you guys want to look at that, it needs to be sealed. Or what we do have in here, I think this covers it whether or not it's within the historic.
I mean, that's a check, okay, that's easy.
In the historic, I don't.
It was mentioned.
Yes, because that, that we did.
That's, that's really what I was looking for them to just backdoor on it.
I thought we said something.
I thought we did too, and now I can't remember one.
Well, that's really the line up, where you say the look, zones and locations, that's, that's where it should go in. Uh, that would go under four G, track zone scheduled just in, uh. That's where we should put track zone instead of.
We can put historic district on that list in G then.
Yeah.
Is that where we're putting the historic stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we let Jane not be here because we were gonna talk about traffic, but now we've got party on Monday again.
Again, this is so much standard, just, you know, the details of your parking, your layout. Yeah, your capacity dimensions, uh, the. Also your ADA stamping compliance. You calculate your numbers of parking spaces required.
Yeah. Do you think of a circulation pattern you've added in that, that includes the turn, um, when you have to ask for those return in some places?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, okay. Yeah, it's very complex and that is one.
Thirty-nine is is your solid waste ban given in recycling.
So. Mike, um, Captain, this this issue of the means of disposal, including your amount of pickup per week in recycling. Recycling facilities, I mean, it's a verb does all of that unless it's an apartment complex. Oh, yeah, not commercial. No, we don't do commercial. We don't do. You just put yourself on mute, Mike, we don't do, um, we don't do the apartments, but. We pay for their tonnage and we just pass it ordinance that any redevelopment project that is enjoying a pilot, we're not doing them either. We get tax break energy garbage, so the Q and A.
So what does just need to be amended to say, um, if not in a residential area, if not covered by residential power pickup, because.
We want them to.
Or leave it and have them do a waiver, say it's not applicable?
Yes, let's do that.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Alright, parks. Makes sense.
Yeah, forty-one, I think is now duplicate of something we said earlier.
Yeah, but it's just like dedicate to public use, it's kind of tying in with the parks, isn't it, I guess, but really, I think we need to add that into that easement. Review.
We're saying that, actually, we don't have to say that again.
We just need to combine all of the easement related ones. Okay, total number of lots. Wouldn't that only be covered on the subdivisions?
Yeah.
Wouldn't need that for site plan.
Air disturbance. Yeah, we should go back and look at that too, based on that, the prior one we just said. Duplicate, duplicate, that's a wordy.
At this time of night?
Yeah, I'm putting like things together as well, but it's, because I'm looking, this one has again mentioned the physical survey, which was mentioned much earlier on in the list, wasn't it? Like these requirements in forty-three. Do we combine that in the wording of the survey that was mentioned that had to be turned off or something?
Thirty-something.
Thirty-three.
Even though it's just put adjacent to it rather than being separated by a page. Right?
We could go back and combine again with thirty-three.
Yeah, I just think forty-three and thirty-three could be next to each other, almost, like just move them around.
Yeah, they should be. The thirty-three is primarily to make sure it's done by your surveyor.
Yeah. Yeah, but then this is like specify what you want, but I'm just, I want it, yeah, the two things close together.
Just mentioned it. And into two and one.
Say it again.
I was just, yeah, we did in the section.
Pursuer department, or word department thing that we also. Engineer, it's three.
Yeah.
Construction office probably needs one.
Five with digital copies should be.
Yeah. And then forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, they're all about setbacks, are they all different? I mean, I think it's really important to show setbacks, you know. But.
And that's coming in from our existing.
Isn't it, because I asked works though, but there's setbacks and they're wrong, they didn't know if they worked. Forty-seven.
I feel like this, doesn't this like tie in with the whole twelve and thirteen thing we did with existing property lines and easements?
That's really, I mean, I think it should be located perhaps next to that. But that's truly existing versus proposed in zoning.
Right, but we're gonna split, like our twelve is the existing and thirteen is proposed. However, it needs, I just feel it needs to go in with that.
So forty-six, forty-seven, you think needs to compare sharply what?
Twelve and thirteen and the fifteen would be easements, you know, all that discussion we had earlier, they seem, if we need the separate line items, at least put them adjacent to those things. I feel like, yeah, just to clean it up. Make it logical, so that they see all those things at the same time. If I'm not mistaken. This is existing, right, times and easements, this is proposed, they are three, of these.
Kind of get, get together and fix and put into as well.
And tie it up as they see fit, all right. Rob, do you have everything from us? I know you're going to have too much from that.
I think, I think.
Too much, we're good. Is there anything from the board that isn't covered on here, that's glaring to anybody that we need to add? Or that within the.
I listen to several members of the board, we are, several of which will not process it in this process whatsoever, who probably will have those to say.
Well, that's just the warnings we're on, but they could have, they didn't, they could, they could also provide, they knew we were discussing this. Which I totally expect to happen, but even though we've come through this, when you do the next one, we'll be, we'll just.
Giving back what we think we just did.
Exactly, like we did, but I think that's perfect, and then we should gradually get in that, it's an intricate process. And it's all.
Good question on, so the impervious surface, that's under four G, that's where we get that?
If, if it's a zoning requirement, then yeah, our zone says you're limited to whatever our zone, any zone, it says, yeah, that's where we go.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then on the, the historic district, um, are we saying, is the property in historic district, like yes or no? And then have they applied to H B C for approval? They don't have to, but what are we putting in for historic?
And this has, this is not the place where we're just, I just wanted to welcome to identify, know that on this, at this point, they identified, I know whether they're in or out. So.
Okay.
Seemingly, so we're gonna look at this one more time the next meeting in two weeks. Right, and then.
Yeah.
Karen, you're gonna meanwhile draft an ordinance to introduce it to council level, or is Chris Christina doing this, who's doing this? Or how does it come as a?
Upgrading your applications or no?
Yeah, I think we also have to do, yeah.
Yeah, but we could do the checklist first and get this done before we get any more bad application. So, so is it a referral that comes from here with the res, with the ordinance?
What, what I would suggest we do is we could just send it, we could do a resolution of planning board.
Okay.
Saying that we prepared this for consideration, we'd like the governing body to review it and determine. Maybe make a little, essentially, everything starts with the governing body. So if the governing body decides that they wanna introduce it, then they decide to introduce it, planning board would ask the governing body to introduce this as a member of their work. Let's do a checklist. That's how, then it will come back here and then we'll go back to the government.
Do I still have to go back and?
Okay, this is part and parcel of your ordinance, this is our existing checklist.
Okay, cause I just want everybody to know, the council is only meeting once in July and only once in August.
It'll be done by then.
So whenever it gets introduced, I mean, if I introduce in July, it's a month before, for the public hearing and uh. Just step away.
Okay. Right. But that. Kind of clarified is that the. Certain members on board have kept saying, well, you can do all the work with the checklist, but you still need to do ordinance changes, but is that the only change we need to do? That, if you introduce this and say.
It just gets attached to.
Just a new checklist, but this, this doesn't trigger other.
And really, the way it would probably be the best to do is to say, here's an attached, that's, that we don't keep amending the ordinance, you could just amend that.
Yeah.
You know, that we do this sort of preservation map or something along those lines. I have that on. What? No, the or, I mean, remember, the ordinance changes are typically initiated with council, that's where the ordinance come from, so. We can help with it, you know, doing, making reservation, yeah.
Okay, I think where my question also came from is, is there anything in any of the checklists that? We've said would require an additional, no, orders, it can almost be covered by just.
Now, what Beth was saying was, in our ordinance, our ordinance may right now say, for completeness purposes, you must give this, this and this. In the ordinance as opposed to an attached checklist. Correct, and you don't have to go through this whole thing. I mean, you still have to go, I mean, you'll be able to shake the body.
So I mean, next, I also, if we can move this to where we're necessarily through the application.
Yeah.
And tweak that, and these, definitely these.
So we wanna do all that together, then the application with the checklist, the application sheet, so they kind of tie in that, providing that.
We need to get the, we need to get the checklist done, but, you know, one order is thrown in our face.
I think the checklist, because I think that we definitely know we wanna make that very simple, um. Change to the front page of the application.
Right.
But we don't, you know, we may wanna make some other changes for, you know, for existing, you know, before, you know, we might not really take a look at it.
So we wanna, what we, what I'm, I'm, it's okay for us to ask for this to be ordinance and then do a different ordinance for the application phase?
We, we could send one to the council every other week.
Till we get there. All right, exactly, all right, so we know the way forward, we are happy. I'm happy, I'm doing things, thank you very much.
Um, just quick question, the, is the application also referenced in an ordinance? Is that what I just heard? That you would have to go back a second time to pass the application with the governing body?
No, in the ordinance, there is a requirement in application, we usually don't be filled out.
So we would have to just send that application form and.
Could we pull that out of the ordinance and leave it on, on our side of the shop, so we don't have to go back to the governing board when we make the change to the application in the future?
Yeah.
I just don't understand why it would be in the ordinance. Like, I was actually quite surprised that we had to go back to the governing body to change our checklist. And I guess we're looking to remove that from the ordinance as a, you know, where it's falls on the planning board. Would we, at least do that with the application as well, when we?
Fine, the planning board's authority is only limited to what the state of New Jersey gives it, then the governing body has to give you the rest of the authority.
That includes the application.
The governing body creates one.
Okay, I'm, I'm just surprised, um. I understand that application is governed by land use laws for the state as well, it's gotta be compliant in all those areas.
It doesn't have, in land use law, there is no checklist, so therefore, there is no authority for checklist to the state, so it has to come through the governing body.
Oh, okay, I see, got it, thank you.
Yes, thank you again. Okay, so, let's move on then. Like my time, when I'm saying this, so, um, chair items, our next meeting is June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Full disclosure, I will not be present, Jim is going to chair that meeting.
It's a question, are we doing completeness and, uh, a hearing for that act, ARQ, whatever it's called?
I don't know, this, that again is an appeal, isn't it, the ARQing thing?
I think they, yeah, it's a, it's a certificate of non-conform use.
All right, so they're not appealing the decision, they're coming forward for the non-conforming use, yeah.
Right.
Well, have we?
Whatever he submits, I did a sort of intro, I did one initial review, then I did a supplement review, cause I thought he was coming in tonight. And he was incomplete, cause he had.
The motion at the net last meeting was a motion to deem the application conditionally complete with the additional items to be submitted three weeks prior to the public hearing. Which was.
He submitted that letter saying he can't get it three weeks.
Those things in, he has not done that yet, so, but it is conditionally, but those, he hasn't met that condition.
Okay, I don't think it's certain that he's standing on the next hearing.
No, it's not true.
We said the planning line three weeks.
No, I mean, so I think in July.
But probably one.
It's a kind of application, I'm not gonna review it three weeks.
Yeah. And, um, Worksville Road, you want to draw a word of note? Worksville Road have also, um, said that they are not coming in, they've asked for an extension, or they've allowed us to have an extension, if it's correct as well. And they're not planning to come in until December. Well, they're, so, that's what they said.
Or they gave an extension.
They didn't, that's right, that's true, I missed, you're right, they didn't say, they, they gave us until December, the end of this year, to deal, to.
So, which indicates that it might be very late in the.
Well, they're giving themselves a lot of time. Having said that, um. Karen, I need your advice on this, I would like to drive the book. When they, we are suspecting that when they then come back, if the plan will be substantially different than it currently is. Completed for, and completed for. Where do we stand with that, um, what, what, what do we have open to us, are we, what do we have open to us?
I mean, I think definitely they can renotice, if for no other reason that the two hundred foot list might be stale, usually it's good for about six months. Um, so, you know, that's, that would be.
Is the new checklist in, in, in the law, when we require now?
We cannot require them to do that because they're already deemed complete, but the board at any time could ask for whatever additional information they feel is necessary. So that could be the new items we put on that checklist, so, you could do it without doing it as a completeness issue. Now, if they withdrew the application and resubmitted, different story. Then you start the block all over again, you start the requirements all over again, you start the new checklist.
So legally, because they, they are allowing us extra time, we can't stop this process. It's not for us to stop it, it's only for them to withdraw their application, is that correct, or is there another option?
What, I've had this situation before, and I've had boards that have decided to say, you know, listen, you have to start construction, it's been too long, you have to resubmit. You run the risk of having an issue with that, um, so I don't necessarily recommend it. What you may want to do in light of this letter and in light of the extension, is ask them to come in and explain what's going on. What's the problem?
That is the real question.
You know, what is it, are you having an issue with the higher authority that you don't wanna take the risk coming before the board and you wanna go and pursue that first? If that's the case, I mean, at least there's some open dialogue about what's going on. I, I, I think that's. A, a, a good question, you know, because it has been hanging around for a while, do you need input from us, you know, what's, what's the deal?
Right, and this the fact that their application was allowed. Because of something that was in place, which is now not in place, and if they came with the same application, it wouldn't. It would be a non-conforming use, you know.
Their lawyer, if I'm somewhere, I'd be concerned about that.
So whether, whether it's a D E P water issue, or whether they ran out of money, and they're just asking for extensions, and so they can put more money together. Because they don't wanna lose the fact that they were a, a conforming use at the time of application. That is the question, is why are they dragging this out and not coming back, do they, is there escrow?
I've sent you, um, the letters that I've been sending out, and they are very deliberate in their letter, in their escrow. So that may be eighty five hundred dollars, but what happens, these people are now getting paid because. And I've sent multiple letters.
And we have.
In, increasing my, my language in the letters, and it goes to Robin, right?
Do we have the right to not allow them back before us until the escrow?
You know, leverage to be have.
Do we have the right to say to them, yeah, you can ask us for all the extensions you want, you're not coming back until you pay the escrow?
Well, well, they need to pay it now, I mean, now. Well, there's no one who worked it set on the application, either board review or professional review until they pay the escrow, that's fine. This, the other question though is, at what point in time, if at all, can we say, you have to start over? And since this is a delicate, more, you know, delicate situation, I think we should take a little bit to that and discuss it. But I do think that it makes sense to, you know, ask them to come and talk before. And if that's the case, then what I think we should do, since right now they were. Their hearing is scheduled for the twenty fifth, that's when we adjourn them to.
That's what we adjourned them to, but in their letter, they said that they would renotice.
Okay, what, what I think would make sense is for me to reach out to Robin and say, could you come to talk to the board? And then stop at twenty fifth and July.
We have a right to know, but you're not going to be here on the twenty fifth, Karen is gonna be here on the twenty fifth. I'm here, so, again, I can ask the two questions that are important, what the heck is going on, and when are you paying your escrow, so we can figure out the questions. Those are two, those are two questions.
So, you know, you let me know what you want me to do.
So I'll be getting them, that's nice, but, that's all.
I think they owe us that, and eight, eight thousand, they owe us.
Right.
Discussion, and eight thousand, before we.
Right.
Because otherwise, we feel like we're being, well, what is happening is they're holding on, holding on to a conforming use.
Right, without having real plans.
I don't wanna have too much of a conversation.
No, that's what I.
We're talking about today, I.
They may be doing that.
So, and we, we don't know what they're doing, there's a question, um, that's, and, and I'll look into what the building board has.
You know, we've seen that all over this town, since the storm was.
Okay, I mean, let them come in, let them explain what's going on, um, so that we then can evaluate what options we have. And I think that's the, that's the right.
Be comfortable if I went to come in and do it with the next one, or if we must do it the one. Well, they, well, then, right now.
That's, that's, they've asked to carry the twenty fifth. So, we would ask them to come in the twenty fifth.
And then, well, just, just their attorney.
No, oh, yeah, yeah, no, I would, whoever wants to.
Yeah, whoever wants to, right.
Right. Yeah, that's good. Okay, I don't have any other chair items. For this point, it's been the time, um, all right, let's move on to item thirteen, then, um, the bills, auditing the bills. Anybody, you wanna dig it in? All right, so, physically, so, um, so can I have a motion to audit the bills?
So, so, so.
Thank you, we've, um, full roll, please, um.
Yeah, Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Samina. Mayor Carroll, yes, Mr. Champion.
Yes.
And, yeah, Ms. Wainsman.
Yes.
Ms. Echo.
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Show.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, item fourteen, do, Cara, do we need to go into executive session? We know, okay, great, um, awesome, um, item fifteen, um, can I get motion to a chair? So, thank you. All in favor? I.
I.
Much, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Hello. Hi, Don. You're always, you're fine, everybody, oh, you should. And. Hi, everybody.